Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 8:05. The governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. In response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 10 persons or less in all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for January 19th, 2021, City Council may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All the aldermen of the City Council participating in the January 19th, 2021 City Council meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion. I'm going to do that now. I'm going to do it the way it appears on my screen. Alderman Toledo, please confirm you can hear me and others.
Yes, I can.
Alderman Deuter.
Yep, I can hear. Thank you.
City manager.
Yes, I can hear you.
Elaine Leibowitz.
Yes, I can hear.
Alderman Mulliner.
Yes, I can hear.
Tom Trazin in our annex.
Yes, we can hear Mayor.
Alderman Dunn.
Yes, I can hear.
Alderman Kennedy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Hill.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Palomsky.
Yes, I can hear.
Alderman Cahill.
Yes, I can hear.
Alderman Park.
I can hear.
Alderman Hanquist.
Yes, I can hear you.
Dan Serrino.
You did.
Oh, Don. Are you fighting with the city manager?
I am, Don.
Don, I see you on mute. Not that he's technically a member of the City Council, but I would like him to participate. Don, can you try on muting and saying hello? I don't think his microphone is working.
Where's Mike Spencer? Don, you might have to.
Why am I getting feedback?
It's because Alderman Levin's microphone is there.
I thought you were going to ask if I could.
Don might have to call in. But we should wait until he's available. Bear with us, council. That was it. That's everybody. I'm just bouncing the last one.
Negative. You didn't call me. Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Bram. Thanks for chiming in. Alderman Brennan.
I can hear you, Mayor.
Clerk Tamer.
I can hear you, Mayor.
Levin. All right, hold tight, everybody. I missed a whole row of people there. Hold tight. Okay. And then if he wants to talk, we can access him through Tom Trazin's thing. Okay, council, I don't know if you heard that. A city attorney on One Connection can hear us and see us, but he's going to dial in to the annex where Tom Trazin is. So if we do need him to speak, he can participate that way. So, city manager, are we good to go then? Okay, so I would ask that everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Hill.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Sorry, here.
Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here, here.
Deuter.
Yeah.
And Remus is absent. Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a forum. We are in session. On to Agenda Item 3. Received written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody who has any written communications that we should submit? Mr. Anna Shavitz? No? Tom, anybody in there with written communications?
Nobody, Mayor.
Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 4, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anybody either in our audience in either location, here at City Hall or online, to provide comment to any subject they wish. We ask out of respect for work we have to get done here this evening and respect for others who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. We are recording this, so we ask that you state your name. Address is optional. Clerk Tamer, to your knowledge, is anybody participating in public forum this evening?
No, Mayor, no one has signed up.
Mr. Trazin, is anybody online who wishes to participate in a public forum over there?
Yes, there is, Mayor. There are at least two people that are on the phone for public comment.
And do they want to participate or they just want to listen?
I believe they want to make comment.
Okay, can you, do you know who they are, like in what order?
I have James, would you like to go first?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and State Council. My name is James Boglioli. I'm 570 Delaware Avenue, Buffalo, New York. I am in-house counsel for Delta Sonic, which is item 6.4 on the agenda. I'm going to keep it brief. We spend a lot of time on this project, working with the city and the neighbors. The project is a significant improvement above the existing Delta Sonic, and I just wanted to call in in case there are any questions before you interviewed the matter.
Okay, Mr. Trazin, who's next?
Kathleen West, are you still there?
Yes, I am. Hello, my name is Kathleen West. I'm an attorney in Maperville at Durham, New Cobine, Weston, Gensler, and I am the outside counsel for Delta Sonic, and I am here to help answer any questions with James that you may have.
Okay. Anyone else at your end, Mr. Trazin, either on the phone or in person?
Let me check, Mayor. Is anybody else on the line that would like public comment for the city of Elmhurst City Council meeting? Mayor, there's nobody else.
Thank you. We don't have anybody here, do we, Jim? Okay, that concludes public forum for this evening. On to Agenda Item 5, Announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Raise your hand if you can. I don't see anybody, city manager. Seeing no announcements, we'll go on to Consent Agenda. At this time, is there any item on the Consent Agenda? Any alderman wishes to have pulled? To vote no or provide further comment. Whoops, Alderman Hill. You're muted, for the record.
Yes, Agenda Item 6.4.
6.4, all right, hold on. Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
6.20.
6.20, okay, 6.4 and 6.020. Anyone else? Seeing nobody else, I will now entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda minus Item 6.4 and 6.20. Motion to approve as stated. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. Clerk Tamer, please call the vote.
Hill.
Aye.
Dunn. Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Remus is absent, so 13 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
13 ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent Agenda minus Item 6.4, 6.20 is approved. On to Agenda Item 6.4. This is a report out of DPNZ. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the following requests. A map amendment from R1 Single Family Residence to C2 Community Shopping and Service District for three parcels. A conditional use permit for a car wash. A conditional use permit for an automobile detail shop. A plat of subdivision consolidation to combine four lots into one lot. A variation from the reservoir spaces required for a car wash. A variation from the parking requirements for a detail shop. A variation from sign height requirement. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Michael Hanquist Chair, Mark Mulliner Vice Chair, and Bob Dunn, Alderman Ward 2.
Put this before council and ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read.
Aye, Mayor.
Alderman Hanquist with the motion. Alderman Mulliner, I see with a second. Motion and a second. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
I will defer to the alderman that pulled it, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Hill, you pulled this? The floor is yours.
Yes, I'd like to speak to specifically the variation for the parking requirements for a detail shop and conditions four and five in the report to provide off-site parking with not less than 12 spaces and also to display prohibitions for parking, for having on-street parking around the business, to prevent that by posting that at the time of employment in employee common areas and reminding employees of the prohibition. And I am not against the Delta Sonic expansion, but I've been aware of citizens in the area voicing concerns about various items. The one that had caught my attention was parking because I do have some personal experience witnessing with three children that have gone to the kinder care, which is the business adjacent directly east of that business, and witnessing an earlier issue with parking over the last few years and using that facility. I know that the three streets that are directly south of the business, Bonnie Bray, Glade and Glenview, do not have sidewalks. They do not have, they have some parking prohibitions, but there is parking a lot on those streets. I know there is off-campus, I mean, sorry, off-campus, off-site parking available right now, at least eight sites at the intersection of North Avenue and West at the business there. My concern is that are these posted notices and reminders sufficient to remind employees not to use street parking? And by using street parking, that could be exacerbated by the fact that there is no sidewalks and might increase issues of congestion and safety in those areas. I have been aware that when Kinder Care, the business east, was going through this issue, there was, and I believe continues to be, although in the time of COVID restrictions, that business has not been as active as far as I can tell as it was previously, but there has been issues with staff parking in that location on the side streets. And so I am interested in discussing whether perhaps more of the indoor vacuum area should be converted in advance to address possible parking issues should employees not follow the prohibitions that are posted or they've been told.
Okay, any additional discussion? Alderman Hill, I'm going to ask you to mute your computer, and I'm going to go to Alderman Mulliner.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of quick statements on that. We have extensively talked to Delta Sonic about the parking issues. They have assured us that if there's, they will monitor the parking as far as their staff, making sure that they park in the appropriate locations on North and West in that parking lot where they have leased spots. On top of that, they have also committed to putting in a sidewalk on a one-side street, and they've committed to talking to the state of Illinois because it is a state road to put in a sidewalk on North Avenue. So this is a company that has done a very good job of reaching out to the neighbors to hopefully accommodate those needs, but if there are issues that come up, we definitely need to address those as soon as possible. So if anything comes up that you hear of, if we can just make sure staff knows, they'll address it immediately. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Dunn? Alderman Dunn's good, it looks like. Oh. Nope. Where'd he go? I can't even see him.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
This, this project had a lot of questions by the neighbors, various concerns. There was talk of noise, lighting, smells from the place, in addition to the traffic parking that was already mentioned. And the, the project is designed to be an improvement in those areas. The way the entryway is, there's a lot more queuing on sites, or there's going to be less cars backing up onto North Avenue where there will be none. So there's, and there's more ability to get cars through there quicker, so to take care of that queuing traffic. There's also going to be a joint exit with Burger King to help so that everyone doesn't have to come right out of that drying area, right onto North Avenue. There's an alternative exit there, which is going to, again, improve the safe exiting from the location. The prep area where they spray you initially is much more enclosed. That's going to cut down on the smells. And then with the newer building, there will be less noise. The lighting, this particular business closes at nine, so the lighting will be off at nine o'clock. So overall, the impact to the, to the community is positive. Less noise, less smell, better traffic management. It's an improvement to the site, and I think it's going to help the business out. So I think it's, it is a good project, the way it's proposed. The applicant did a very good job of reaching out to the neighbors, and not just with one token meeting. They were continually engaged with them and actually volunteered to put, what do you call them, chicanes or tables on Glade Avenue to slow traffic down. They were going to pay for that, but per our public works engineering, that's not something we do in our streets. So they were really willing to go over and above in a lot of the design decisions to get, to accommodate the neighbors' preferences. So I think overall, all the concerns were addressed very well.
Okay, any of the additional comments? I don't see anybody. Jim, do you? All right, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll call vote on the motion.
Hill.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Remus absent, 13 ayes, zero nays.
13 ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.4 is approved. On to 6.20, an ordinance. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to Section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Any discussion? Alderman Bram.
Yes, as previously discussed in previous weeks, I feel that our current processes and procedures that are in place to suspend the rules is sufficient enough to handle all and any city matters, which we have demonstrated over the multiple months, even during the pandemic.
Okay, any additional conversation? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Hill.
Aye.
Dunn.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Remus is absent, 12 ayes, one nay.
12 ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.20 is approved. On to reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Three quick items. It was my honor and pleasure, like, eighth and final State of the City address. Little different with COVID. We still had it at Community Bank of Elmhurst. I want to thank the Chamber for sponsoring, and I want to thank Rich Reichert and everybody over at the Community Bank for hosting. Little different, but we got it done, and I certainly want to thank staff and everybody who helped me pull together a mountain of facts that I had to try to cram into 40 minutes. Not only was our regular information had to be passed along, but I had to weave in 10 months of COVID. So it's on, it's already up. We did host it live, and it's already up on Elmhurst TV. So if you are interested, it's one hour and three short minutes long. I encourage you to go take a look. I know that staff and elected officials continue to get questions about the COVID vaccine. The best resource for information on the vaccine and how it will be distributed and what tier, there's a hierarchy of who gets it first, doctors, nurses, first responders, et cetera. I would direct people to the DuPage County website. They have a lot of information immediately available on when the vaccines, who gets the vaccines, in what order, and they also, when it's available, they are letting us know when the vaccines are rolling out. Right now, we're still in 1A, category 1A, and we hope to go to 1B by the end of this month. I don't want to call it wait and see. I know they're moving as fast as they can, but DuPage County Health website is the best resource for vaccines. And finally, I regret to inform you and the city of Elmhurst that the Elmhurst St. Patrick's Day Parade has been canceled for this year for obvious reasons. That is obviously a well-attended parade. In fact, I can say that the city of Elmhurst hosted the largest St. Patrick's Day Parade of 2020 last year, but we're still under governor's orders, and we pack them in pretty good for that parade. So the decision was made to cancel that. No determination on how creative we're going to do to maybe help residents celebrate safely. More to come, but the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which really the hardcore planning, I spoke to one of the directors today, the planning really starts in December and can't go much past January in terms of lining up insurance and participants. So the decision was made to cancel the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Thank you, just one item. Is that the council knows we've been working on the College View Stormwater Improvement Project, which is a project that is going to be out in front of York High School. As part of that agreement, we have worked with the school district to schedule a public open house for that project. And we confirmed today with the district that that is going to be held on Wednesday, January 27th, from 5:30 to 6:30. It'll be a virtual meeting utilizing Zoom, so we'll be posting all those details on our website. We just confirmed that today with the district, and we wanted to make sure that everybody had plenty of time to, to get the word out. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple O'Hare Noise meetings to give a quick highlight on. So the full ONCC met on Friday, last Friday morning. The interim fly quiet that was approved two years ago, that had some breaks in it because of construction, that actually is coming to an end next week. Then we're back to the regular fly quiet, which is what was in place for the previous 20 years. The ONCC is working on executing an intergovernmental agreement to extend the body, the ONCC body and those that are members of it, so that ordinance will come before us as a council to review and agree to when that's finally put forth by the CDA and the city of Chicago. There were some interesting presentations there at the ONCC meeting. One was on the COVID testing that's going on at O'Hare and Midway airports. That started, the employees started mid-December, and I think traveling passengers started at the beginning of this year. So to date, and that testing at O'Hare is voluntary. That is in the shuttle bus center area, which is kind of near the Hilton, in the middle of the, middle of the airport complex. And they've tested 2,000 people at O'Hare, about 300 at Midway. There's been a 2% positivity rate of combination of employees and traveling passengers. Naturally, if you're a passenger, you test positive. They, they have the rapid antigen test there, which gives you a result in 20 minutes. You're certainly supposed to avoid traveling at that point, as well as employees that test positive, they are required to notify their employer of the results. So that's something new, just starting to go on at O'Hare. There was also an interesting study that the CDA talked about on noise sensitivity, and there was a, a noise sensitivity curve called the Schultz Curve. It's been used for 30 years, and it basically indicates that. and it basically indicates that 10% of the people are highly annoyed at 65 decibels, and 20% of the people are highly annoyed at 70 decibels. And that was back 30 years ago. There was extensive surveys done, over 10,000 people living near busy airports, and the, the change in that curve is pretty astounding. Instead of 10% being annoyed at 65 decibels, it's about 60% are annoyed at that level. And then at the 70-decibel level, instead of 20% of the population, 80% of people are annoyed. So I think, you know, I don't know what to make of that, other than people are more easily annoyed by noise these days, which is, which I can see that in some of the interactions I have with the public. So that was that meeting. We had a, we had a Fly Quiet meeting yesterday morning. I'm sorry, that was this morning, where we discussed several alternatives, rotation plans. One passed. It was a, Elmhurst voted for that to move forward, and four of them did not. There's two others that'll be discussed at the next meeting. And that's my report.
Thanks, Alderman Dunn. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 8, 8.1. It's a resolution. I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of Amendment Number 3 to the Professional Engineering Services Agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Baxter and Woodman, Inc. for services related to the Water Reclamation Facility Bundle 4 Waste Water Improvements Project, WPCLP, loan number L17-5532 and 5533. See Item 6.19.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Brennan. Alderman Kennedy?
Sorry about that. Yes, this is tied into the item on the Consent Agenda. We're suspending the rules from a timing standpoint so that we can get the IAPA bidding process rolling forward as part of this project. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn? Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
And Remus absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 8.1 is approved. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Dunn. Clerk Tamer?
Sorry, Hill?
Aye.
Dunn? Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
And Remus is absent. So 13 ayes, zero nays.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.